Good evening. I'd like to extend a welcome to everyone here to our reorganizational meeting by Wilmer City Charter. We meet on the first Monday after the first Tuesday following an election. As your city clerk treasurer, it is a duty that falls upon me to offer certificates of election to our newly elected officials. But before that, we'd certainly like to welcome everybody here for newly elected officials behind me, their spouses and family members. We certainly welcome you. Our distinguished guest, Judge Spilseth, and for everybody in our viewing audience. At this moment, I'd like to invite our newly elected mayor, Frank Yanish, out here with Frank, as one of my duties, I get to offer you a certificate of election, and I'll read that. It says, "I, Kevin Halliday, City Clerk of the City of Wilmer and State of Minnesota, do hereby certify that at a general election held in said city and state on Tuesday, being the second day of November 2010, Frank Yanish received the highest number of votes cast for the office of mayor in the city of Wilmer, State of Minnesota, and was therefore duly elected to said office, as appears from the official election returns and canvas on file in my office." Congratulations, Frank.
Thank you very much.[114.75][114.75](APPLAUSE).
Collection going, maybe.
Thank you very much.
With that, I'd like to welcome the honorable Judge Don Spilseth.
Thank you. Mr. Yanish, I'd like to begin with the oath of office. I'd like you to raise your right hand, and I will begin as follows. I, Frank Yanish, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and the City Charter of the City of Wilmer, and that I will faithfully execute and discharge the duties of the office of mayor in the City of Wilmer, County of Canoie, State of Minnesota, according to the law, to the best of my ability and understanding. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Frank, you take the duty of putting your chair at the center of our table. And now, I would like to request that the four council members who were reelected at Again, I'll take this opportunity to extend to each one of you.[231.01][231.01](LAUGHING) You were doing good. You were doing your right words. Extend to each one of you a certificate of election that reads, "I, Kevin Halliday, City Clerk of the City of Wilmer, State of Minnesota, do hereby certify that in a general election held in said city and state on Tuesday, the second day of November, that Bruce DeBleek received the highest number of votes cast for the office of City Council Ward 1, Ron Christensen for the City Council Ward 2, Rick Fagerley for City Council Ward 3, and Doug Reese, City Council for Ward 4, in the City of Wilmer, State of Minnesota, and was therefore duly elected to said office, as appears on the official election returns and canvas on the on file in my office." Gentlemen, congratulations.[286.27][286.27](MUSIC) Now again, the Honorable Judge Spilseth.
All right. We'll begin. I will ask you all to raise your right hand, and I will ask you to give us each name individually then when we go to that. I, Bruce DeBleek, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and the City Charter of the City of Wilmer, and that I will faithfully execute and discharge the duties of the office for which I was elected, according to the law, and to the best of my ability and understanding. It's official.[352.00][352.00](APPLAUSE).
special ceremonies tonight. Thank you very much. With that, I will call tonight's meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Yanish.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dokken.
Here.
Fagerley.
Here.
DeBleek.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
With that, let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
(INAUDIBLE) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, innocent with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I'd like to have an invocation from Reverend Stephen Beilenberg.
Good evening. One of my favorite stories is about two little girls who, as they spend time with each other, realize that there's some differences between them. One of them is a Lutheran and one is a Catholic. They decide the only way to really resolve that is to go to church with each other and see what the differences are themselves. And so they arrange that with their parents. They're fine with that. And they decide on a couple of Sundays who will go where. And the Lutheran girl visits the Catholic church first, and there are a couple of things that don't happen in her church, and so when those things come up, she, you know, asks her friend, and her friend explains those to the best of her ability. The next week, they go to the Lutheran church, and she, the Catholic girl doesn't see anything really that she, you know, doesn't understand until, at the beginning of the sermon, the pastor takes off his wristwatch and he lays it on the pulpit. And so she leans over to her friend and she says, "What does that mean when the pastor takes off his wristwatch and puts it on the pulpit?" And her friend says, "Not a darn thing."[526.12][526.12](LAUGHING). Whether you're at the age where time goes very quickly, or you're like the little girl sitting through the sermon, we know that time is the one thing that we're not ever going to be able to get back. We know that God created everything, and that includes the times and the seasons. He separated night from day. He gives us the four seasons of the year, including lots of snow. One of the things he expects of us is to make good use of the time he's given, and that good news is that he has plans for us, even here in this year of 2011. Through the prophet of Jeremiah, he told his people long ago, "For I know the plans I have for you," declares the Lord, plans to prosper you and not to harm you, plans to give you hope and a future. Years later, St. Augustine would make an observation to the fact that life is a pilgrimage, and the work of the world is never fully done, and you know that better than anyone. Parents discover that they are always going to be parents. A teacher is always teaching, whether they are at school or not. A city worker is always a city worker, whether he or she is on the clock or not. I know sometimes your work is immensely rewarding. I know there are other times where it'll be frustrating beyond belief. And so sometimes we ask ourselves, why do we continue? Why do we knock ourselves out? And the answer is, we don't just do it for ourselves. It's not just for our own interests. We keep working in the belief that somehow we can make better things for our children and the generations that follow us. That's the hope that keeps us going, even when nothing else might. We know that Americans are sometimes at their very best when they rise to challenges, when things are the very most difficult. In a speech he gave in 1861, Abraham Lincoln said, "The struggle of today is not altogether for today; it is for a vast future also." A vast future. I think that that vast future is closer to us than we ever even imagined. It begins with those pictures of our children and our grandchildren that are in our wallets and on our screensavers. They're just the beginning of that vast future that we work for. For those of you who are going to continue in office, we say, keep up the good work. For those of you who are beginning a new post, roll up your sleeves and join in. A vast future is counting on you. In his inaugural address, John F. Kennedy knew that his work as president would never be finished, and he said as much. He spoke of hopes for his country, and he said, "All this will not be finished in the first 100 days, nor will it be finished in the first 1,000 days, nor in the life of this administration, nor even perhaps in our lifetime on this planet. But let us begin." Our work continues. It begins, it continues, but hopefully it will never end. But let us begin. Let us begin. Please join me in prayer. Lord of the nations, God of this community, Savior of these, your people, we come before you in this new year calling on your promise that you have plans that will prosper us. Let your hope be our hope. Let the future you have for us be our hope for the future as well. Tonight, we thank you for those who have served diligently and faithfully before us in this community. We ask now that you would be with the people of this community as we strive to live together in peace and prosperity. Be with the many men and women who are not only willing to serve in this community, but we ask now that you would especially be with those who've been chosen by this community to serve them in elected office. Help them to be faithful in the work that's been entrusted to them. Help them to listen with fairness and to act always with integrity. Above all, Lord, help us realize that our actions today will impact the vast future of this community in the days ahead. In your name, let us begin. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Steve, for your time that you spent with us this evening and for the encouragement and the good words that you've given us tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll move to number eight on the agenda, the proposed additions and deletions to the agenda. Steve?
I have one thing under miscellaneous, Mr. Mayor. Regarding garbage recycling.
Where do I see that?
He's adding.
Maybe on miscellaneous.
Could you repeat that against the councilman?
Just to get some discussion and referral to committee on garbage recycling.
Okay. Any others?
Nothing from staff.
Then we'll move to the consent items.
Move to approve.
Second. I move to approve the consent items. Shall I read those?
Yes, sir.
The city council meetings of December 20th, 2010, the Rice Hospital Board minutes of December 15th, municipal utilities commission minutes of December 20th and 27th, and then to accept the building inspection report for December 2010, and the community edit and recreation minutes of December 7th, 2010. Move to approve.
You have a motion and a second.
Have a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, and the consent items have been approved.
We need a vote.
Voiceful.
Just votes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. There have been no items removed from the consent agenda, so we'll go into number 11, scheduled hearings. Mr. Gamm, are you here and would like to speak to that?
Sure.
The amending the rates charged by the Municipal Utilities Commission of the City of Wilmer, a public hearing to be effective for billing sent on and after February 1st, 2011. So I open the hearing.
Very good.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I did put together a little PowerPoint to try to address some of the concerns. I watched the last December 20th meeting, and there was a couple of questions that were raised, so I tried to address those and also just kind of do a brief overview of what's going on at Utility that's facilitated the need for this for this increase. So I will start with that.
Okay, so Advanced Engineering and Environmental Services Incorporated published an independent survey of the 2010 North Central utility rates for communities 5,000 and greater. Of the 37 municipal cities in their report, Wilmer had the fifth lowest water rate. Of the city's comparable size and industry with Wilmer, Wilmer's water rates were the lowest. If you look at, these were the different cities, so we took their names out to protect them, but you can see their different rates. We looked at residential, commercial, industrial, and large industrial, and just more or less concentrated on residential. You can see our rate is $14.36, and everybody else is either above that or much above that. The average in the column for residential is about $23. So you can see Wilmer is substantially lower already than all these other communities that we typically compare ourselves to. Even with, down here on the bottom, you can see these are proposed increases. It will take us up to, with the first step, up to $15.26, which is the normal rate. The summer rate, which I'll get into the difference between the winter and summer rate, will be a little bit higher, and then the following year will be at 1611. And even with that, assuming nobody else increases, we still will be the lowest water rate. So the good news is that even though we are looking at a little bit of an increase here or an increase, we're still, I think, doing a pretty good job, and the numbers show that. Proof's in the pudding. Why are we at the bottom of the list for water rates in Minnesota? It's because Utility staff and the commission's long-term efforts to control costs. Now, there is pretty well-known fact that part of the reason why the utility is looking for, needs a rate increase is that water consumption by our largest customer, by far, Jennio, is down. But that reduction in consumption is really a benefit to all of us. Water rates are based on long-term financial plannings with mandates, maintenance, capital expenditures, and extra. The rates do not reflect short-term changes in usage. We plan for long-term changes, and we have enough in our budget to be able to deal with ups and downs that would happen like on an annual basis, so we're looking at more long-term three-, four-year type trends. Long-term decreases in consumption will allow us to use the existing water system for longer, delaying the need for significant capital investments, which is a really good thing for all of us because it saves us money, so we don't have to invest in capital. And with Jennio's water conservation efforts, they also will save money even with the current rate increase. So it's a good thing, and we're really proud of them. They've worked really hard to conserve water, and like I said, that's a good thing for all of us. Knowing the impacts, knowing the impact that were increased sewer rates, knowing the impact that the increased sewer rates would have on the community, we tried to delay our rate increase so as to not impact the community with both increases during very difficult economic times. Unfortunately, we had pushed things back as much as we can, and now we must do our rate increase so that we can make up for that. You can see just our water rate increases. We had an increase in 2007. We held steady in 2005, 2006, and '07. We had our increase. We held steady since then, but now our proposed rates would take us up to these amounts. And if you see, for our typical residential customer, our increase in the water rates would be an average of $2.17 a month more increase. Unfortunately for the city, they, you guys have had to deal with a new water plant, and your increase is significantly more. So we were aware of that going into 2008, when we knew we were starting to get pretty tight, so we made a decision to try to defer our rate increase that we could do to be able to save the community, kind of a double whammy effect. So that's why we did that. But looking at this, the bottom line is, we're a nonprofit organization. When expenses increase, revenue must also increase. When governmental mandates or regulations are added, then rates must increase to cover the additional expenses. As Utility, we are very mindful of these difficult economic times. We are very fortunate here in Wilmer to have Municipal Utility operating as a nonprofit organization with staff and commission that is very hardworking and conscientious of the needs of our consumers and communities. And I want to assure you that with this increase, it will allow us to continue serving this community's best interest, and we'll continue to operate efficiently and mindfully of our consumers' needs. And with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Comments from the council or from the?
Not from the council.
From the guests?
Yeah, only from the public.
Public, any comments?
We have one.
Yes.
Would you, your name and address?
Certainly. Mayor Yanish, I'm Randy Alsleben, Director of Engineering for Jennio Turkey Store, and I'm here tonight to speak to the water rate increase. So Mayor Yanish, members of the council, city staff, thank you for this opportunity. For some of you, I'm new to you. Others have seen me before. I've also been a member of the Public Utilities Commission for this community, so I clearly understand the issues that Bruce presented here tonight. The issue that I'm here to talk about is basically two concerns. Number one, the size of the increase. And I believe the increase is a two-year proposal, somewhere in the neighborhood of 10% per year, if I'm not mistaken, and the severity of the summer conservation rate. In Bruce's presentation, he talked to you about the water conservation efforts at Jennio Turkey Store, and we're very proud of those efforts. Over the past five years, we've been able to reduce our water consumption by 17%. That's a sizable decrease. Now unfortunately, if you add the two increases together, it amounts to 20% increase. So I'm a little confused by Mr. Gamm's comments that 17% water savings or water reduction and a 20% increase will result in saving us money. That's a little confusing to me, but maybe perhaps after the meeting, Mr. Gamm could explain that to me. Again, with putting off some of the maintenance issues, as the Utility staff has explained, I'm concerned that we are putting off expenses and delaying them to one large increase, and that's what we're seeing this year. When I was on the commission, we undertook repairs on a systematic, annual basis and planned for repairs. We put money in reserve to take on larger tasks, such as painting the water towers, and planned for those expenses as we set our budgets. I'm concerned that the reason we're standing here justifying that is, we have all these repairs. Does that mean when the repairs are done, the budgets are going back down and the rates are decreasing? Good question. Again, I certainly understand the need to cover expenses. I believe that's the charge of the Utility, of the Utility Commission, and of the city council. My concern is that we manage that budget properly. The second issue is the conservation rate. There's a very substantial increase during the summer months in the proposed rate structure. And I do know that the state is encouraging and in fact mandating water conservation. I don't think they're mandating the size of a conservation rate. I think that's up to the local community and the local utility to decide those rates. My concern on behalf of Jennio is, our water usage stays constant year-round. Water conservation hitting summer rates, to me, indicates we're trying to encourage people to stop watering their lawns, to stop using water in the summertime. And I do understand it's a conservation rate intended for the summer, and if you need so many dollars, you need to average that out year-round. And in the end, it may make no difference one way or the other to the rate. However, it's difficult for major industries to budget summer months different than winter months, especially when our budget year has already occurred and these rates are just being implemented now. I appreciate your consideration, when you look at these rates, into the efforts that we've already made, and just your understanding of the concern of communicating rates early in the process so that we can account for them in our budgets. And I appreciate your guidance in letting us know that the City of Wilmer will continue to be a great place to do business with very competitive water rates in the future. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this issue.
Thank you, Randy. Are there any other comments or any other people that would like to speak, for or against? If not, I will close the public hearing and ask the council what they wish to do.
Councilman Spilseth?
Couple of questions, if Mr. Gamm wants to.
Concern with the amount of this rate, how it's structured. How'd you structure this? It looks to me as though the largest increases, or maybe I'm looking at this wrong, but the largest increases are in the residential area. I know you're going, what you are now, up to $1.32 a hundred cubic feet, where when you look at the industrial and commercial rates.
Percentage-wise?
They're not.
I'll let Bart answer.
They're not. That's not happening.
Bart Murphy, Superintendent of the Water Department. Percentage-wise, the residential increase is actually slightly lower than the commercial and the industrial, but they're all very close to the same. That's how it was structured.
And with, understand this is somewhat to address conservation that is being mandated by state. Is that correct?
That's correct. The 2008 state legislature passed a law that's enforced by the DNR that requires all public water suppliers to implement conservation rates as defined by the DNR on a two-step timetable. The communities in Seven County Metro had to already implement this. All other public water systems have to implement a conservation rate by January 1st of 2013.
And can you explain how that, how we're doing that with these rates?
How we're doing that? How we're doing that? What we're proposing is a, basically a non-summer and summer rate classes across all three customer types. We're already using that type of rate structure in both the electric and the heating divisions, where we define non-summer as eight months, October through May, and summer as June, July, August, and September.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, Councilman Anderson?
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. We oftentimes hear about all these mandates, these unfunded mandates, and that's had a significant impact apparently on water. Can you explain what some of these are and what the cost implications might have been?
Sure, be glad to do that. Right now, we're facing a number of different unfunded mandates from a variety of regulatory agencies. We use chlorine for disinfection. And by EPA and OSHA regulations, we have to do a variety of things in that regard. Three separate documents we have to create. One is a compliance audit every three years. One is called a process hazard analysis every five years. And one is called a risk management program. Those are all things that we have to comply with or we will be subject to EPA penalty. Another unfunded mandate is called wellhead protection. That is a combination of both a federal and state requirement, but administered by Minnesota Department of Health in our case. And that's something that's coming this year in 2011. That's the start of it. That will, we will have to comply with that and come up with a plan and a program that meets the requirements of the law. Another area has to do with groundwater level monitoring. That also is a requirement of the Minnesota Department of Health. That will also force us to spend some capital dollars on a new monitoring well that they want us to put in place. Those are some examples. There have been others in the past. Conservation program that we have to develop and renew. That is a, I think that's a combination of Department of Health and DNR. So, those are examples of things that we have to do. And quite frankly, they all require very specialized consulting services. Some of them demand it. I've been in one situation where we tried to do something ourself and EPA told us we were in violation because we did not have qualified expertise as part of the program. So, I don't want to make that mistake again.
And another question, and thinking about these conservation rates for the summer--
Yes, sir.
I guess I hadn't thought about it from the industrial side. I was thinking about it more from the residential side. And with these rates, there's no thought given to how much somebody really uses. So, in other words, you have somebody that lives maybe in an apartment or doesn't have a garden or doesn't water outside or something like that. And through, no fault to their own, they're gonna use the same amount of water in the summer. Those residents are gonna pay more for their same water usage.
Per unit, yes.
I guess, why didn't we think about some sort of a structure where the more you use, the more you paid?
We evaluated a number of potential rate structures that are available to us per the DNR. It was our conclusion that the fairest, the fairest structure for everyone concerned would be this winter/summer rate structure. Producing the water in the summer, when the demands are highest typically, we have found over time, is the most expensive water we produce for a variety of reasons. So, it was our conclusion that conservation across the board that would not only reduce the demand that's looked at as peak, but the baseline demand would be the wisest course for everyone concerned. We looked at a number of other possible structures and what I kept coming to was, well, that's really unfair for that group, or that's really unfair for that group. So, this seemed like the fairest for all concerned.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming tonight, Mr. Murphy.
Over the weekend, on the news, they talked about fluoride. They're saying, "We're putting too much in our water now." Is that gonna be an unfunded mandate, that we have to do a study on our own water? Or are we gonna be able to just reduce how much fluoride? And will that save us any money? Or what do you think will happen? Or is it too early to tell?
No, no. I was, if I had gotten the okay from the Department of Health this morning in my phone call, we would have turned it down this morning. But they're not quite ready to do that. That's a recommendation from CDC, Center for Disease Control. And what I was told by our health department regulator was that there's a 30-day comment period. And if after the 30 days, that recommendation goes forward, then the state health department will make a determination if we can lower the level. And if they do, we will immediately. And I also looked at that, that there's a potential savings of maybe $10,000, $12,000 a year if we're able to lower that fluoride level to the 0.7 parts per million that they're recommending.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Doc?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bart, thank you for coming. Can you answer Mr. Alsleben's question about they have reduced their consumption by 17% yet they're seeing a, I believe he said 20% increase. Did I get that correct?
They have reduced their water consumption considerably since about 2005. And we've been tracking that trend. And as Mr. Gamm explained, that's one of the major factors in why our revenue is down. In the proposed rate structure, yes, they will be seeing approximately a 10% per year increase, the same as residential and commercial customers will. And that's what we need to fund the department at the minimum level to do the things that need to be done.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Christensen and then Councilman--
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Bart, for being here. Mr. Gamm, too. Seems like we're in a catch-22 here. They want us to conserve water. So, the less water we buy, or anybody buys it in this locale, the less revenue you have at the utilities. So, the higher the rates go, we use less, they go higher, we use less, they go higher. I mean, it's just, you know, where does this stop? Does not the state or whoever mandated this know that we're sitting on top of gazillions of gallons of water here in Wilmer? And I think people are aware of that. And I hear what Mr. Anderson says about the people in the apartments or jots that use the same amount of water every year and they're being penalized for being in business. Something just doesn't make sense here to me. Conservation, to me, would be rewarding people that use less and then making people that pay more or use more, pay a little more for the water. Those that use the same amount, I don't think they should be penalized. I mean, it's just, am I the only one thinking that? It's just like we're caught in catch-22 here. You're damned if you do and damned if you don't.
I would agree. We are in a catch-22. But as I've seen in other areas, governmental, I shouldn't say it like that. State and federal bodies often pass laws or rules with a broad brush without looking at specifics of different areas. I've seen this, not only in this case, but in another case having to do with water. The legislature looks at what happens in the Twin City metro area that's driven primarily by surface water and the Mississippi and Minnesota rivers. And they pass rules and laws that don't make any sense for us out here because, yes, we are sitting on a lot of groundwater.
To me, in an area like Wilmer, it makes more sense to use more water, to water your grass and yard and recycling thing, where we're just cycling the water. It's good for the atmosphere, it's good for the ground, and they want us to use less so that somebody in Arizona, you know, is having peace with the world. I don't know. But it just doesn't make sense to punish Jennie-O Turkey Store for using the same amount of water in the summertime as they do in the winter. And these mandates you talk about, these governmental agencies, I call them unelected power. We're dealing with them constantly. They come out, they make the rules, EPA, PCA, MPCA. And we're supposed to follow them and pay for them. But I'm just frustrated with that and with the fact that we have to, I'm gonna say, punish people for using water. I mean, that just doesn't make sense to me. But I don't know where else it's all gonna lead.
Premise my question with, we like low rates. We like low taxes here in Wilmer.
So do I.
So, it's good that we are able to keep our taxes down and keep our water rates down. My question is more in regard to, and I'm not really sure how to question you on it, but I think you'll get what I'm looking at. You know, I don't know how much this generates, how much this increase will generate. You maybe know that. But if we, I made a comment at the last council meeting and brought chuckle from some of them, and it comes from some other function that I was at one time where a guy said, "I'd rather be nibbled to death by a duck than eaten alive by a lion." And that's taking a little bit at a little, every year, adding just a little bit every year. Could we have had a lower increase by doing a little bit each year?
Well, we could have. But quite frankly, I'll take responsibility for that. When I was looking at budgets heading into 2009 and seeing what was happening around us in the economic climate, the greater, of the greater world, it didn't seem to me it would be wise to come forward with a request for a rate increase. Hindsight's 2020, maybe I should have. I'm no expert on the greater economic climate or when things will improve and how much. But I just did the best I could at trying to not put undue burden on our consumers when it seemed like things were tough overall.
I didn't ask it to be critical, I just--
No, I don't take it that way.
Because I'm thinking that if we had had a small increase and, you know, a percentage of what we're looking at today and built up more of a reserve to be able to tackle, Randy said something about painting the water towers or whatever that expense might be, or buying a vehicle or whatever, just building up a reserve that we'd be able to tap that reserve to be able to meet some of the bills and some of the increased costs.
Well, typically, we don't build up reserves for operating and maintenance costs. We try to operate at a minimum level, just do what's necessary. And the only time reserves are used is for capital improvements. But going forward, I will certainly keep that in mind, that you'd rather be nibbled than bitten.
That's right.
Are there any other, Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to follow up on that a little bit. You know, you explained some of the unfunded mandates and these programs that you have to put into place and you have to get an expert to do it. So, okay, you have that expense in the next year or two. What's gonna happen in '13? Are we gonna be looking at, again, significant increases? Or what is your, what does your plan look like moving forward for '13, '14, and '15 as you look out there five years?
Well, all other things being equal, I don't see that need coming. The water towers have been mentioned a couple of times here, so I'll speak to that because that's one of the largest maintenance expenses that we have to face. We have two towers that need attention both inside and out. And my plan is to spread that out over a four-year period so that those numbers aren't huge in any one year. I'm not aware of any other major expense items that we should face in, let's say, the next five years, other than what I'm looking at right now, or any unfunded mandates that haven't been brought forward. So, I would hope this increase would last into that five-year range. But this guy's telling me he wants to be nibbled, so--
Well, and I hear that and I can appreciate that, but I was just wondering if there's anything big out there. I would certainly hope that we're not gonna be looking at 10% in '13, '14, and '15. Then I think we've got a serious problem.
Well, I hope not. I don't foresee that unless something changes that we're not seeing right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thanks for being here again. I'm sure this is not the most, the funnest time to come before the council and have to explain yourself again, as you've done probably very well with the Board of Directors that we have a lot of confidence in, and you and operating our city. I want to first comment that there's very few complaints about utilities in the city of Wilmer, as far as the councilman. So, for that, I guess you should pat yourself on the back, whatever is being done. I think it's being done correctly.
Thank you.
Then I'm gonna throw in, please don't get defensive because this is our job. We had, you mentioned all of these, these issues that were gonna be mandated with. And in the city, of course, and all government entities are faced with these unfunded mandates. And that's been going on since the 80s and even before. Is there a breakdown or have you given that information to the board, what these mandates are costing us or just for the consumer, so they can understand what these changes are and how it's affecting the bottom line of the operations of the utilities? I think it'd be a very good thing to explain that, maybe to the public.
Well, I've provided that both to our own board and to the finance committee. So, a number of officials have seen that.
Okay. I think it'd just be-- I think it'd just be, get a better understanding with our constituency and your customers how that would go about or how it's going about. That's just one comment I had. The old thing, you're looking at a $10.5 million capital improvement project for this coming year, correct, approximately?
I'll let Bruce speak to that.
Yeah.
Not for the water department itself.
No.
For the overall utility.
Yes, yes, for the utilities itself. And how much discretion is used between those two funds? On your breakdown, how much override do you have from one department lapping over the other, or how much is cross-referenced, or how defined is it? Very little?
Oh, they're very well-defined. Each, each division has its own separate and distinct budget. There's no.
Right.
Crossing of funds or anything like that.
Okay. And I know this is a thorn in the side and the $1.5 million on Big Stone Two project, that, I'm going to keep bringing it up and I'm just wondering, does that come out of reserves or not? Sorry to put you on the spot, Bruce.
Yeah. No, actually, we were able to pay that debt last year in 2009 completely out of retained earnings. We were very good and very fortunate in the electric side of things that we had much lower than expected power supply costs and so our retained earnings were higher than we budgeted and we were able to actually use funds, the excess, the additional funds that we received over and above our operational costs, which show up in our retained earnings, to actually pay off that debt all in 2009.
Okay, that's good news. Thank you very much.
Yep, sure.
Are there any other questions? Discussion? Then I think that we need to, do I hear a motion? Wait a minute, we have to close the hearing, don't we?
Mm-hmm. No, we've done that.
We've closed the hearing. It's up before the council only, so.
Okay.
Take action if they choose.
Motion to give the ordinance a number and publish it. Second.
A motion to give it a number and publish it. Okay, a motion to give the ordinance a number and publish it, and the motion has been made and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Hi.
Christensen.
Hi.
Anderson.
Hi.
Ammon.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Dacken.
Hi.
Baggerly.
Hi.
DeBlick.
Hi.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Okay, the resolution passes and the numbers will be posted.
In fact, February 1st is the implementation date.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bruce. Next is a scheduled hearing. The next is a scheduled hearing to amend the Wilmer zoning ordinance by amending Section 3 relating to employees at home occupations. And Bruce, would you speak to that?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council. The Planning Commission, working with staff, has proposed an amendment to our zoning ordinance specifically with regard to home occupations. The ordinance, as it previously, as it currently stands, does not allow for any non-family, non-resident members to be employed in a home occupation. The Planning Commission is proposing an amendment that would allow up to two non-family members to be employed on the premises of a home occupation, and this is in response to changing trends in the workforce. More people are working from their homes. There's changing demographics and, quite frankly, a changing demand that would make this reasonable. The proposal would still require a conditional use permit for a home occupation and it would give the Planning Commission and the council all the authority they need to ensure that the sanctity of the neighborhoods is preserved and that there are no adverse impacts. It's a recommendation of staff that the ordinance be adopted, given a number and published.
I turn to you. Did I open the public hearing or should I open?
Now it's open.
Okay. Is there anyone to speak for or against the ordinance to amend the Wilmer zoning ordinance by amending Section 3 relating to home employees occupations? If not, I will close the public hearing and open for discussion what the council like to do.
Move to give a number and publish it.
Christensen.
You had a motion down there. I move to give a number and publish it, Mr. Mayor. I'll second that.
Okay. A motion has been made and seconded to give the Wilmer zoning ordinance by amending Section 3 relating to home occupations a number and to publish it. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Hi.
Anderson.
Hi.
Ammon.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Dacken.
Hi.
Baggerly.
Hi.
DeBlick.
Hi.
Reese.
Hi.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes and the number, the ordinance will be given a number and posted. It comes to that time of the evening where number 12 on the agenda is that the mayor will give a state of the city address and since I am new at the mayor's position, I don't have a lot of the facts and figures that a lot of the other mayors may have had. However, I'd like to give you a little bit of what my vision is for this city and where I would like to lead the city. And so with that, to the citizens of Wilmer, members of the city council, city staff, media, and guests, I say good evening. 2011 marks our 141st year as a chartered city, a city that has enjoyed continued growth and development. Strong leadership from elected officials, working closely with staff and citizens, will ensure that we keep moving in the right direction. I believe we have the people in place to get that job done. I wish to publicly thank former Mayor Les Heike for his years of service to our community. Thank you, Mr. Heike. The next few years will likely prove to be very challenging. As your new mayor, it is my intent to steer the city down a path that leads to a consensus, cooperation, and hopefully, solutions for a number of capital projects that have troubled us for a number of years. Recovery from the recent recession and achieving our goals will require nothing less than everyone's full cooperation. It is imperative that we keep a close watch on our spending and put everything on the table for scrutiny. With the probability that our city will have less local government aid from the state, we must constantly reevaluate the way in which programs and services are delivered. It is my understanding that our workforce is already significantly reduced through retirements and vacancies that are not being filled. I know, too, that great cooperation exists between the city, the municipal utilities, Rice Hospital, Candio High County, and the Wilmer Public Schools, in that resources and expenses are shared on a regular basis. We must continue that practice. We should look to privatization of programs and services when privatization makes sense. In addition to any perceived or real cost savings from privatization, we should always look to the citizens for their tolerance of any reduced services as part of the final analysis. I will be interested to study in greater detail the workforce planning documents submitted by the city administrator at the time of his announced retirement. With an aging workforce, numerous other pending retirements, and a sluggish economy, we will have ample opportunities to consider new faces and fresh ideas and to reevaluate how to provide city programs and services. I want to continue placing emphasis on resolving local stormwater and water quality issues. I'm looking forward to the results of the surface water management plan scheduled to be released in the next few days. Hopefully, this document will allow us to establish a workable plan of action and find some solutions to age-old stormwater problems. I sincerely hope for resolution to the airport land release issues early this, early this year. I think we can all agree that the release process has dragged on way too long, delaying critical economic development activity. We must find some reasonable room for compromise with state and federal agencies and I call upon our state legislators, representatives in Congress, to aggressively intervene on our behalf so that we can get back to the business of growing our city. It is important that we maintain a vibrant downtown area. It is the hub of the city and beckoning back to the theme of the 1980s redevelopment program, it is everyone's downtown. A vibrant downtown and surrounding areas include pursuit of railroad quiet zones, a train noise nuisance that we must find a way to address. Finally, we must continue to support efforts with state and federally elected officials to ensure adequate transportation systems to and from our community if we are to remain a strong regional center for west-central Minnesota. I thank the citizens of Wilmer for this incredible opportunity to be of service to our city. Many thanks go out to the city staff for all their help and assistance given to me during this time of transition. By all of us working together, we have the ability to confront head-on these challenges we face and establish our community as a destination of choice to work, educate, raise our families, and enjoy the many recreational and cultural amenities. Thank you and may God bless our city. Moving along to item 13, consideration for a public hearing. And Steve, Mr. Okens, would you explain that to us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. At previous meetings, Rice Hospital has been before you and gotten permission to do Phases 1 and 2 of the renovation and additions and construction at the Rice Care Center. They have gotten, proceeded to do that. They've had an estimated project of $3 million. Part of that process is normally done with bonding. They have also used a financing mechanism in the past of working with a consortium of local banks. They did this with the information systems that they improved at the hospital. The action needed tonight is just to set a public hearing where the details and information will be discussed, so you would need to pass a resolution setting January 24th at 7:05 for a public hearing to have that discussion and public input.
I would introduce that resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Resolution has been made, our motion has been made for a resolution and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Ammon.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Dacken.
Hi.
Baggerly.
Hi.
DeBlick.
Hi.
Reese.
Hi.
Christensen.
Hi.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes to further consideration for the public hearing. There will be a public hearing on January 24th at the city council meeting at 7:00 P.M. At this point, we would like to open up the Wilmer City Council Open Forum. If anyone has, has anyone signed up?
Nobody has signed up, Mr. Mayor, but there's still an opportunity to come if you grant that.
Does anyone need to or want to speak or open at the city, at the forum? Now's your chance. We will move along to article number 15 on the agenda. Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on our agenda was a public forum. We had two people that spoke. Mr. John Sullivan addressed the committee regarding the local option sales tax program and we did point out that on the agenda for that day, it reflected that this topic is going to be scheduled for a future finance committee meeting and former Mayor Heike also spoke on this issue. That was for information only. The next item has to do with the investment policy. Staff presented the City of Wilmer investment policy to the committee for its annual review. Following some discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would move the recommendation of the committee to amend the investment policy to include a terminology section.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to amend the investment policy. Voice for the discussion.
Would you like me to just explain that a little bit? Yeah, we didn't recommend any changes to the policy itself, other than we, we had some questions on some of the terminology that was used in the, in the documents, so we just requested that there be a section that identified and explained the terminology. That's all we're doing, it's just adding terminology section to the, to the policy, no change to the basic investment policy.
So we have that motion and a second. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
The next item was the 2010 appropriations and staff reviewed with us the general fund revenue and expenditures. That was as of December 30th, 2010, but those weren't the final figures as receivables and payables need to be determined and accrued for the rest of the year. The final numbers will determine if there's any additional year-end appropriations that will be needed and those final numbers we will see sometime in probably late February or early March. That was for information only. The next item had to do with the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust dividend. Staff presented us some information regarding the 2010 property casualty dividend that's anticipated that we will be receiving and that will be in the amount of $33,319. Former Mayor Heike explained that the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust process of determining insurance premiums as well as the dividends. It was also noted that cities are required to be a member of the League of Minnesota Cities in order to participate in its insurance trust program. So that was for information. The fifth item talked about our, our federal lobbyist, David Turch and Associates. Administrator Schmidt reviewed the city's appropriations request that was submitted to David Turch in January 2010. It was recommended that the next annual request be prepared after the city council holds its strategic planning meeting in February. So that was also for information. The next item was the fee schedule. Finance Director Okens reviewed the proposed 2011 fee schedule, which establishes fees for city services, permits, and licenses, and rental fees for city equipment. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution establishing the 2011 fee schedule as presented.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to allow the fee schedule. Any discussion? And that would be a roll call?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Ammon.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Dacken.
Hi.
Baggerly.
Hi.
DeBlick.
Hi.
Reese.
Hi.
Christensen.
Hi.
Anderson.
Hi.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes.
Excuse me. The next item was aquatic center donation. Finance Director Okens informed us that we received a donation of $100 from the family of Marie Coteen to the City of Wilmer's Aquatic Center and that's to be used for adaptive swim lessons. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution accepting the donation of $100 from the family of Marie Coteen and send a letter of appreciation.
Second.
A motion has been paid, been made and seconded to allow the, the, help me out.
Accepting the $100 from the family of Marie Coteen.
Okay. And that would be a roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Hi.
Dacken.
Hi.
Baggerly.
Hi.
DeBlick.
Hi.
Reese.
Hi.
Christensen.
Hi.
Anderson.
Hi.
Ammon.
Hi.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The next item, we talked about future agenda items and some of those will be things like the local option sales tax, Rice Care Center financing, and deferred and suspense assessments. assessments. That was for information only. And finally, the last thing we did was took a look at the Rice Trust report. That was also for information. So unless there's questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. And the next item on the agenda is from the Public Works Committee. Councilman Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you recall, council, the Public Works, Public Safety, had some safety concerns brought before them in regards to the traffic and pedestrian traffic in front of the Community Christian School back in November, and staff at that time was directed to research alternatives and costs, and then bring it back to the committee. Dell Brower, who is the superintendent of Community Christian School, was present and to address any questions that the committee might have. Our Public Works Director, Holly Wilson, researched the installation of school-owned flashers, and that passed precedence for both Kennedy and Roosevelt Schools, was that school participation includes the cost of materials in any future maintenance. The discussion that we had earlier was that there was no sidewalks going out to the pedestrian crossing on 19th Avenue, and to put two sections of sidewalk with handicap ramps in there, making the connection on both sides of 19th Avenue, within the right-of-way, would cost an estimate of $4,600. Materials for a flashing system that's similar to the one that's at the Roosevelt School would be $1,200 to $1,500 for materials, and our city staff could potentially install the system. The other system that had been taken a look at by staff was a solar energy system, and that would be $3,600 per unit for a total of $7,200, and that would probably have to be installed by a private contractor. The last option that was looked at was a speed limit flashing sign, and that's estimated to cost $8,000. And in all of the cases of each one of these scenarios, our municipal utilities has agreed to provide the electricity at no charge. The history of the traffic accidents in that area, in the last five years, there were four accidents, two occurred during summer months, one on a Sunday, one during school hours. And it was noted that traffic counts in this area have increased approximately 2,000 vehicles per day since 2006. Mid-December, the county formally requested that MINDOT complete a speed study. And the last one, if I remember right, was done in 1991. The committee directed staff to work with the school on the installation of flashers. I just have to have something clear in my mind before I make this, and the motion that we have here is, committee directed staff to work with CCS on the installation of flashers.
Second page, next page, motion.
Yeah, to install, you know, proceed with their plans, but my question is, is CCS paying for the equipment and installation in our motion?
That was our understanding.
That was my understanding also, but it didn't seem that clear to me in the motion. So that's why I asked the question. I just needed to clarify that. So I would make the recommendation of the committee.
Second. Okay, tell me again what the motion is.
It's to allow Community Christian School to proceed with plans to install flashing lights.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded.
Mr. Mayor, this would be the same kind of flashing lights that's in front of Roosevelt.
Right.
MUC would be supplying the electricity.
Right.
And more than likely, our city staff would be installing it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think you should include in your motion that the final plans and specs are subject to approval of the city engineer.
Okay, I think I did that. Thank you.
How'd I seconded that right there?
So I'm trying to figure out what the motion is. To allow the Community Christian School to proceed with the installation of the flashing safety lights, subject to final approval of the city engineer. That's the motion.
That's the motion.
I still have another question. Okay, what about the sidewalks?
We'll work with them, and we'll do what we can to help, but I think we were clear at the meeting that the cost of that typically is the responsibility of the school based on our past involvement with other school projects.
So some of the discussion we had as far as possible volunteer help to install could be a workable situation.
We'll do what we can to assist.
Okay, fine.
Does that need to be, the motion need to be amended? No, no, not at all.
Under details.
The motion has been made and seconded as to what Mick said.
There you go.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
All right, the next item was a briefing by our Public Works Director, Holly Wilson, on activities and with all of our multiple snow events, and council has that in their pack. The third item was in regards to Project 0901, and includes street improvements on Trot Avenue from 10th to 16 Streets, and 11th Street Southwest from Trot Avenue to Trunk Highway 12. During construction, there was additional common excavation and Class 5 aggregate was needed due to some unstable subgrade in the area of 12th Street Southwest and Trot Avenue. The extra quantities and a bituminous incentive of $2,675.8 resulted in change order number one in the amount of $9,964.32, and staff presented the final change order number one in the amount of $9,964. I'm sorry. Yeah. Staff also presented the final estimate to Project 0901 for a total of $101,283.61, and that consists of the final adjusting quantities and the 5 percent retainage. So I would, first of all, there's two resolutions, and the first one would be to approve change order number one to Project 0901 in the amount of $9,964.32.
Second. A motion has been made for a resolution to change the order number one in 0901 to, am I right?
It's to approve the change order, Mr. Mayor.
It's just to approve the change order. To approve the change order. And that would be a resolution. A roll call.
Councilmember Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
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 Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The next item was final payment for Project 1003, and this is the reconstruction of the North Swanson Field parking lot slash trailhead improvements, and the required paperwork has been received, and final quantities agreed upon. The payment consists of final adjusted quantities as constructed and the 5 percent retainage. So I would move, or introduce the resolution to accept Project 1003, issue final payment to Dunick Incorporated for $9,099.90.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution to accept Project number 1003 and issue final payment to Dunick Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $9,099.90. A roll call.
Councilmember DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Fifth item was another final payment, and that's for 816D6, which is our pump stations. And Rhonda Ray from Donahue and Associates was at the meeting, and she laid out the final payment estimate for that project. It was a project that was done by Dymar Construction. The project is complete. The work has been inspected by city, by the city staff and Donahue, and it is satisfactorily I would introduce a resolution to accept Project 816D6, issue final payment to Dymar Construction Incorporated in the amount of $48,850.32.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution to accept Project number 0816D6 and issue final payment to Dymar Construction in the amount of $48,850.32. Roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The next item, our fire chief, Mark Calvin, reviewed some proposals that he had solicited for an update to paperwork and educate staff on the requirements of OSHA. This past fall, the city was chosen to be audited by OSHA, and it resulted in several violations and penalties, and now staff is requesting proposals to provide updating of records and adequate training for our city staff. There were two proposals. The lower one was from SafeAssure of Willmer for $6,125, and staff is recommending that the city enter into an agreement with SafeAssure for the year of 2011, and the cost of the agreement would be funded by transferring surplus safety program funds from 2010 and the remainder from within the 2011 budget. So I would introduce the resolution to authorize the mayor, city administrator, to enter into an agreement with SafeAssure for $6,125, authorize the city finance director to transfer funds as recommended.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to, for a resolution to authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with SafeAssure for $6,125, and authorize the finance director to transfer funds as recommended. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Fifth item was another final payment, and that's for 816D6, which is our pump stations. And Rhonda Ray from Donahue and Associates was at the meeting, and she laid out the final payment estimate for that project. It was a project that was done by Dymar Construction. The project is complete. The work has been inspected by city, by the city staff and Donahue, and it is satisfactorily I would introduce a resolution to accept Project 816D6, issue final payment to Dymar Construction Incorporated in the amount of $48,850.32.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution to accept Project number 0816D6 and issue final payment to Dymar Construction in the amount of $48,850.32. Roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The next item, our fire chief, Mark Calvin, reviewed some proposals that he had solicited for an update to paperwork and educate staff on the requirements of OSHA. This past fall, the city was chosen to be audited by OSHA, and it resulted in several violations and penalties, and now staff is requesting proposals to provide updating of records and adequate training for our city staff. There were two proposals. The lower one was from SafeAssure of Willmer for $6,125, and staff is recommending that the city enter into an agreement with SafeAssure for the year of 2011, and the cost of the agreement would be funded by transferring surplus safety program funds from 2010 and the remainder from within the 2011 budget. So I would introduce the resolution to authorize the mayor, city administrator, to enter into an agreement with SafeAssure for $6,125, authorize the city finance director to transfer funds as recommended.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Safety Committee report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The next item on the agenda would be the Community Development Committee report. Mr. DeBlick.
Thank you. Staff updated the committee on the status of Mammoth Church at the corner of 7th Street Southwest and Litchfield Avenue. Apparently, a deal between the private contractors and the church to swap land for the building falling apart. All asbestos has been removed from the building. The asbestos removal contractor had an agreement with the church to remove the asbestos with the understanding that it would place a lien against the property to cover his expenses. The holder of the church mortgage has agreed to subordinate the mortgage to the lien. It was the opinion of staff that although the building has not been removed, major portions of the problem have been eliminated by the fact that the asbestos has been removed from the structure. The estimated cost to demolish the church building is about half of what it was a year ago when the asbestos was still in the building. The committee discussed two options available. Those options are, one, to allow more time for the asbestos contractor to put together a deal to acquire and demolish and dispose of the structure, or two, to move forward with a court action to order the demolition. With the second option, it is very likely that it would fall upon the city to have the building demolished and the site brought back to grade. If this was the case, the site would possibly remain vacant for five years and be declared tax forfeit if the assessment lien by the city goes unpaid. The assessment placed against the property by the city to cover the demolition cost would be the first to be cleared in the event of a sale. At the recommendation of staff, committee informally decided to give the asbestos contractor approximately 30 days to put a deal together. The committee indicated that it did not happen that the council could direct the city attorney to start court actions for the building's removal. That item was for information only. Item number two, airport terminal, staff presented an update on the eligibility, appeal process. Two letters have been prepared with which the state and city case against national register eligibility for the former terminal building site. These letters were signed by the mayor and provided to the FAA, which is packaging the appeal. register eligibility for the former terminal building site. These letters were signed by the mayor and provided to the FAA, which is packaging the appeal. Advocacy has been sought from Congressman Peterson, whose office has agreed to intercede on behalf of the city. Additionally, support is being sought from Senators Clovershar and Franken. The FAA has to provide the city with a digital copy of the entire appeal package. The packet was supposed to have been filed by the FAA with the Keeper of National Records, Historic Places Around the First of the Year. The keeper will have 45 days after the receipt of the packet to review the material and rule on it. If the letters to the keeper and the city request a face-to-face meeting to discuss the appeal, no word has been received yet as whether or not this will happen. The discussion concluded with the committee reaffirming their desire to obtain the land release and move forward with the development of the properties. That item is for information only. The third item, incentives for land sale on city-owned lots. The committee discussed possible incentives for the sale of city-owned lots in Pleasant View, fourth edition. An example of what other communities had done in the way of offering incentives was presented and discussed. Concerns were expressed regarding competition with private sector developers. It was the recommendation of staff that the city continue to offer the lots for sale and to entertain offers on a case-by-case basis. It was a consensus of the committee to offer no incentives at this time, but to continue off the lots for sale. That item's information only as well. Item number four, the construction recap for 2010. Staff presented a brief recap of 2010 construction activities. Just over $22.5 million of total construction valuation was permitted in 2010. Of this total, nearly $15 million was commercial and industrial construction, nearly $5 million in residential values, resulting from 30 total dwelling units, including 12 single-family That item was for information only. And five, as staff presented a brief summary of ongoing projects, included the United Farm Credit Service, Jimmy John's, and the redevelopment of the UBC site. If there are no questions, a motion to file the minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Consideration of the council reorganization resolutions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Traditionally, because this is our organizational meeting, we have a series of resolutions that need to be adopted, beginning with a committee assignments resolution. And I believe you participated in a six o'clock meeting earlier where the council got together and worked on committee assignments for the coming two-year period. I'm also assuming that the mayor pro tem chaired the meeting and has traditionally presented the findings of that meeting at the council meeting.
And I might ask him to do that now, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The assignments are as follows. Labor Relations Chair, Councilmember Ammon. Vice Chair, Councilmember Tim Johnson. And the other two council members serving on the labor relations would be myself, Councilmember Reese, and Councilmember Dennis Anderson, along with staff, Mick Schmidt, city administrator Steve Okens, finance director, and municipal utilities commission and Rice Hospital Board. Finance Committee Chair, Dennis Anderson, Councilmember Dennis Anderson. Vice Chair, Councilmember Rick Fagerly. And the other two council members serving would be Councilmember Jim Dacken and Councilmember Tim Johnson, along with our city administrator, finance director, and city clerk treasurer. Community Development Committee Chair would be Jim Dacken, Councilmember Jim Dacken. Vice Chair, Councilmember Bruce DeBleek. Also serving would be Councilmember Ron Christensen and Councilmember Steve Ammon. And then from staff, city administrator and Planning and Development Services Director, Bruce Peterson. Public Works Safety Committee Chair would be Councilmember Doug Reese. Vice Chair, Councilmember Ron Christensen. And also from the council serving on that committee would be Councilmember Bruce DeBleek and Councilmember Rick Fagerly, along with our city administrator, police chief, public works director, and fire chief. On the serving on other committees, commissions, Pioneer Land, Councilmember Dennis Anderson. Woodland Centers, Councilmember Tim Johnson. Mid-Minnesota Development Commission, Councilmember Steve Ammon. Cable Communications, Councilmember Doug Reese, and Councilmember Ron Christensen. Community Education and Recreation, Councilmember Rick Fagerly, and Councilmember Tim Johnson. Rice Hospital Board, Councilmember Jim Dacken with Councilmember Steve Ammon as an alternate. Municipal Utilities Commission, Councilmember DeBleek with Councilmember Jim Dacken as an alternate. Convention and Visitors Bureau, Councilmember Ron Christensen. The Human Rights Commission, Councilmember Dennis Anderson. Usually, we have allied power in here, but allied power is an idle corporation at the moment. And if we have a need to assign somebody to that at a later date, we will take that up at that time. So there is no appointment at that position. Community Center Council, Councilmember Jim Dacken. Sister City, Councilmember Doug Reese. Transit Joint Powers Board, Councilmember Rick Fagerly and Councilmember Bruce DeBleek. Fire Code Appeals Board Chairman, I gotta make sure I do this right, was Dennis, Councilmember Dennis Anderson. And Vice Chair would be Councilmember Ron Christensen. The Economic Development Commission, appointment of Mayor Frank Yanisch, Councilmember Ron Christensen, and Councilmember Dennis Anderson. Design Center, Councilmember Steve Ammon. And HRA, Councilmember Ron Christensen with Councilmember Jim Dacken as an alternate. So is that a resolution, Kevin?
Yes.
So I would introduce that resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Resolution has been made to approve all the appointments to the committees, and we'll take a, did I hear a second on that?
Yes.
Yes, sir. And a roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. Mr. Mayor, the next resolution we're asking is to set the council meeting dates and times, and we have prepared a resolution for you, unless we hear anything to the contrary, to meet on the first and third Monday, 7:00 PM, right here in this building.
So moved.
That was in resolution.
Here is.
Second.
And a second. It has been moved that the council meetings be set right here in this building at 7:00 PM on the first and third Mondays of each month. Roll.
Councilmember Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The next item, Mr. Mayor, is that it's required to appoint an official legal publication. And the resolution prepared for you is to designate the legal newspaper of the city of Wilmer to be that of the West Central Daily Tribune of Wilmer.
So moved.
Also.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to be resolved by the city council of the city of Wilmer, the municipal corporation of Minnesota, that the West Central Daily Tribune of Wilmer, Minnesota be designated as a legal newspaper for the city of Wilmer.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Thank you. Do we have any other options? Legally, can we have the Raymond or New London, anybody else?
Yes. Is there? Yes. You also may have an option these days of not having one and doing everything higher technology for your reporting of minutes, but that also doesn't get to everybody. So I.
But a motion has been made, right? Seconded?
Yes, it has.
I would ask that the council maybe reconsider to do the new technology and do it via the Internet, our website, versus the local, whatever you want to call it.
You've confused me.
Well, that's part of the discussion, I guess, Mr. Mayor, to help you along. Motion and a second, that's his suggestion and part of the discussion.
Okay.
You still have to call for the roll call because there's a motion and a second. He's just encouraging you to try something different.
Okay. So we'll call for the roll call.
Well.
He's got a question.
What are the conditions we have to meet? What standard is there that?
What do you mean, what are the conditions?
Well, if we do it through technology, I'm not even sure how you do that. And does that meet whatever standards we have to meet for proper notice?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. I haven't reviewed the statute.
You don't know either, do you, Kevin?
Not off the top of my head, but I guess if you're asking staff to research, and I believe there is something new with the league that gives us some options, but you've also, it'll take time to make that report to you, and you've got a couple of ordinances that really need to be implemented already this evening. So at least we need one to start with, and there's a possibility that we could alter our activity depending on what the league may advise us that you can do in the new technology.
And how would we do that? I mean.
Just begin to implement and use the new technology.
Okay.
You need a legal publication for your ordinances that you pass tonight. They will be published in the West Central Tribune a week from tomorrow. That's when they become effective by law. It has to be published again. That's what we're doing with this resolution. If there are other avenues, if you want to check that out afterwards to see if we can just put it on our website and use that, we can make a report back to the council.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we had no indication whatsoever that that might be a possibility, or we perhaps could have done some research and been better able to answer your questions about what our options are and what are the ramifications of us not using the local newspaper. I think that, for the time being, the local newspaper should be designated the official publication, and if you want to consider other options, that we be given adequate time to do proper research, and maybe that's something you might want to consider at a later date. But to not, but to drop it tonight with us not knowing where we go from here is really, puts us in a difficult spot.
Can we put a timeframe on that, when we might expect research to be done on that?
Well, I'm not sure what you're asking of us, though.
Brown, can you clarify that?
An alternative. And if technology is one, I would ask that staff would look into the option of, it's going to save the city a lot of money, first of all, if we can use the Internet or our website for that, and people interested in it, it's there. And not everybody buys the West Central Tribune, not everybody sees the publication of our ordinances and policies. They don't see it in there. Because everybody doesn't get it. There's some that decide not to. So if the Internet or our website is an alternative, I suggest we look into that and maybe set a deadline for, I don't know, May or something, or whenever you can get back to the council on it. And if it takes a motion, do that. I would do that after we consider this one, but I see it in the best interest of the city to do that.
Well, there are a couple of questions. One is, obviously, the cost, and that certainly should be considered, but I think the other is maybe even perhaps more importantly, reaching out to the community. Granted, not everyone is going to read a newspaper, but not everyone is going to visit the city's website every day, either to check on public notices for hearings.
Might get more viewers, though.
Possibly.
If it was put on there.
Possibly. But I think that's one of the things that we find out when we do some research.
Mick, I do have to ask the question, who would do the research, and when could we expect the research back or report back?
It's 30 days. I suspect Kevin and I would work on it, and it could be 30 to 60 days before we have anything definitive.
So how shall we leave that, Ron?
That's fine with me. I guess we have the alternative of always changing, right? I mean, this isn't saying that this is for the next 24 months or anything, it's just tonight we're deciding to put the next ordinances into the West Central Tribune.
Correct.
Okay.
Call for the question.
Yeah, let's do that. Call for the question.
Councilmember Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
No.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you very much, Kevin. The announcement of council committee dates, Councilman Anderson.
Finance Committee won't be able to meet next week because that's Martin Luther King holiday. So we will meet on the 31st, January 31st, 4:45.
January 31st, 4:45. And the Community Development Committee, Councilman DeBleek.
You have information for next week? We have a new one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have a new one to look to.
That date would be next Thursday, whatever that, I don't have that.
16, 17, 18, 19, 20.
Move, our motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution that Mick Schmidt be appointed to administer the requirements. The requirements of what?
As the responsible authority.
As the responsible authority. And that would be a resolution. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you very much, Kevin. The announcement of council committee dates, Councilman Anderson.
Finance Committee won't be able to meet next week because that's Martin Luther King holiday, so we will meet on the 31st, January 31st, 4:45.
January 31st, 4:45. And the Community Development Committee, Councilman DeBleek. Do you have an information for next week?
We have a new one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have a new one to look to.
That date would be next Thursday, whatever that, I don't have that.
16, 17, 18, 19, 20. January 20, 4:45.
January 20, 4:45. And Councilman Reese?
Public Works, Public Safety, will be meeting on the 25th. We have a council meeting on the 24th, the next day we'll be meeting on the 25th.
January 25th. 4:45. And all these are at the city hall? Yes. And Councilman Amen?
No labor scheduled.
No labor, meeting scheduled. Back to Ms. Salini, Councilman Amen, you had something on garbage recycling?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I talked previously to a county commissioner, and with the changes that the county commissioners are going to be facing with the future development of the landfill north of town on Highway 71, it was brought to my attention that we're also going to be looking into, Municipal Utilities will be looking into, looking at a different type of facility to help generate electricity as far as a long-term goal and objective. And I guess the recommendation was to see if, from this county commissioner, was to see if maybe we could get some discussion going on, at what point in time does our community take a stronger stance, or maybe not a stronger stance, on recycling, mandatory recycling to cut down on the amount of debris and things that are going into a landfill, to extend the life of the landfill, and also to help cut down on the pollutants. And I'm just wondering if we should maybe get a committee formed, or maybe we can talk with Bruce Peterson, I think that would be his department, he might be able to open up dialogue with county commissioners and see if there's any input from the mayor and the council on any direction or just information that we might want to be updated on. And I think it'd just be good to get ahead of the game, at least be informed as a council and the mayor of what's going on or what could be going on.
Mr. Peterson, is that something that you and I would be likely to do together? See if we can talk to the commissioners? Bring them to a committee meeting of Community Development? Then they would explain.
We'll get the dialogue going anyway, see what their plans are.
Any other, Ms. Salini, that we need to talk about?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pursue a little bit further the discussion raised by Councilman Christensen with regard to options for legal publications other than the West Central Tribune, and I would, at this time, propose a motion to direct staff to do the appropriate research and report back to us within a reasonable amount of time.
Second. Should we put a timeframe on that? There is a motion and a second.
No, I think staff, reasonable amount of time, it would be relatively prompt, I think we were talking in the range of 30 to 60 days. It's out there.
We have a motion and a second to direct the staff to see if there are alternatives to the current publication that we have within 60 days. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries. Any other business that we need to talk to about tonight?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Motion to adjourn and seconded, we are adjourned.